Really? He zooms in that close?
We actually wants the board to approve it. So it's, it's um basically it's only thirty thousand dollars. It's the supplies for CTAE. It just, I'm telling you, like you've got a two hundred, four hundred thousand dollar grant, but this is the one that they want board approved. It, it, yeah. But it is on, it's, it's school supplies for CTAE.
Um, I thought he was gonna be here. I haven't heard from him.
I could put Clifton Clark on the spot and let him get in front of the camera and talk about it.
All right, good evening and welcome. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order if you would first join me in a fated allegiance and moment of silence.
For our moment to silence tonight, we'd like to take a minute and ask our guests that are here and our community that is watching to please remember one of our special teachers as she is hospital laws and she is continuing to fight and we ask for her healing. We also ask that our guests and our community keep in their thoughts and uplift one of our students who was involved in the serious accident yesterday and that we continue to lift his family up and him up also. So again, at this moment, we'll have our moment of silence.
Thank you.
Hi. First up, we have the consent agenda items. All right. And the consent agenda items, is there a motion to approve? And all of that approved? Perfect. And then the financial reports were available for your review.
And I was gonna share for our financial reports to just let our guests and community know, again, we are very pleased that we've had another successful month for ACE loss. In September, we collected ninety-two thousand dollars in ACE loss. And that is your penny on the dollar when you shop locally, whether that is that for bidding or inconsiderate. So we're quite pleased with the support we have for ACE loss for the past several months. Our school food deficit is now for quarter one is in an eight thousand six hundred dollar deficit. That is less than usual, but we're continuing to work on that. For quarter one, we spent ninety-three thousand and brought in seventy-four thousand. So for everyone who is eating school food meals, we appreciate that and continue to.
Continue to enjoy your school foods because it helps us. And it is no cost. So breakfast and lunch is free for everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then we have the information only items and the superintendent's report.
Mm-hmm. In terms of the superintendent's report, I wanted to start first with our health update. Last week, our health update was the most encouraging that we've had since schools begun. We have a little over ninety percent of our students that attend in person every day. Last week, we only had two reported positive cases of COVID for the student population. So we're very pleased with that progress. Our mitigation strategies, our students, our teachers have all been working well, and that's proven effective. And we appreciate the board and the community in your support for our schools. Because of you, we've been able to remain in person. We do ask everybody, as we approach the winter season with flu and strep throat, that everybody remembers that if you're ill, to please stay home, you can contact your teacher and arrangements can be made for school. And that's the information for our health update. Next is information about our teacher and support people of the year. We are very pleased to announce that for the elementary school, Ms. Charlotte Richards was selected as the teacher of the year. For middle school, high school, Ms. Kimberly Walker was selected as teacher of the year. Both of these professionals are not only outstanding educators, but they are experts in their content and field, and they show us exactly what it means to be a teacher. They lead with their heart and they support all students to meet their needs. We started something this year to recognize outstanding classified staff, and anyone across the district could be nominated for Chattahoochee County Education Center. Ms. Amanda Williamson was selected, and for Chattahoochee County Middle High School, Ms. Kim Rembert was selected. And for those who are aware, our strategic plan focuses on customer service and being a customer service oriented school system. And both Ms. Amanda and both, and Ms. Kim Rembert exemplify that for our district. They actually lead the way and model it for what it means to respond to everyone in a gracious customer service manner. They serve our students, our families, and our community. At the November board meeting, we will honor them with a reception, and we will also announce who is selected as the district teacher and support person of the year.
Okay. Sounds great. You said November. Great, thank you. And then to continue on, our next favorite part.
The, the next part of our agenda is our recognitions from our principals. So we'll begin with Ms. Hurd. And we will recognize our students of the month and employees of the month.
The last meeting, I couldn't.
All right. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order if you would first join me in a fated allegiance and moment of silence.
A fated allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our moment to silence tonight, we'd like to take a minute and ask our guests that are here and our community that is watching to please remember one of our special teachers as she is hospital laws and she is continuing to fight and we ask for her healing. We also ask that our guests and our community keep in their thoughts and uplift one of our students who was involved in the serious accident yesterday and that we continue to lift his family up and him up also. So again, at this moment, we'll have our moment of silence.
Thank you. Hi. First up, we have the consent agenda items. All right. And the consent agenda items, is there a motion to approve? And Shirley, and all of that approved? Perfect. And then the financial reports were available for your review.
And I was gonna share for our financial reports to just let our guests and community know, again, we are very pleased that we've had another successful month for ACE loss. In September, we collected ninety-two thousand dollars in ACE loss. And that is your penny on the dollar when you shop locally, whether that is that for bidding or inconsiderate. So we're quite pleased with the support we have for ACE loss for the past several months. Our school food deficit is now for quarter one is in an eight thousand six hundred dollar deficit. That is less than usual, but we're continuing to work on that. For quarter one, we spent ninety-three thousand and brought in seventy-four thousand. So for everyone who is eating school food meals, we appreciate that and continue to.
Continue to enjoy your school foods because it helps us. And it is no cost. So breakfast and lunch is free for everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then we have the information only items and the superintendent's report.
Mm-hmm. In terms of the superintendent's report, I wanted to start first with our health update. Last week, our health update was the most encouraging that we've had since schools begun. We have a little over ninety percent of our students that attend in person every day. Last week, we only had two reported positive cases of COVID for the student population. So we're very pleased with that progress. Our mitigation strategies, our students, our teachers have all been working well, and that's proven effective. And we appreciate the board and the community in your support for our schools. Because of you, we've been able to remain in person. We do ask everybody, as we approach the winter season with flu and strep throat, that everybody remembers that if you're ill, to please stay home, you can contact your teacher and arrangements can be made for school. And that's the information for our health update. Next is information about our teacher and support people of the year. We are very pleased to announce that for the elementary school, Ms. Charlotte Richards was selected as the teacher of the year. For middle school, high school, Ms. Kimberly Walker was selected as teacher of the year. Both of these professionals are not only outstanding educators, but they are experts in their content and field, and they show us exactly what it means to be a teacher. They lead with their heart and they support all students to meet their needs. We started something this year to recognize outstanding classified staff, and anyone across the district could be nominated for Chattahoochee County Education Center. Ms. Amanda Williamson was selected, and for Chattahoochee County Middle High School, Ms. Kim Rembert was selected. And for those who are aware, our strategic plan focuses on customer service and being a customer service oriented school system. And both Ms. Amanda and both, and Ms. Kim Rembert exemplify that for our district. They actually lead the way and model it for what it means to respond to everyone in a gracious customer service manner. They serve our students, our families, and our community. At the November board meeting, we will honor them with a reception, and we will also announce who is selected as the district teacher and support person of the year.
Okay. Sounds great. You said November. Great, thank you. And then to continue on, our next favorite part.
The, the next part of our agenda is our recognitions from our principals. So we'll begin with Ms. Hurd. And we will recognize our students of the month and employees of the month.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure standing before you and introduce you to our students of the month and our employee of the month. And I'll start with our employee of the month is Ms. Molly Allen. And Molly is our instructional technology specialist, and she has been a godsend to the district. She has done so much, not just for our staff, but our students and our parents. She always goes the extra mile and does it with a smile. There is no problem or technology problem too difficult for her to solve. She is always so very optimistic, so very kind, and so very helpful. And she has just done an amazing job, and her work ethic is unmatched. And we appreciate her and are so grateful to have her as a part of our staff. So congratulations to Molly Allen. And we'll start with our students of the month. Our youngest student of the month is from pre-K, Ms. Chloe Crawford. And although Chloe is not with us tonight, I'll share what her teacher, Ms. Richards, had to say about her. Chloe is an amazing student. She's always on task, and I can always count on Chloe to do the right thing. She gives me one hundred percent in each activity we complete, and if she is unsure about something, she will definitely let me know. Chloe is such a pleasure to teach. I'm lucky to have her in my class. So congratulations, Chloe. And our kindergarten student of the month is Kinsley McGlon. I'm lucky to have her in my class. So congratulations, Chloe. And our Kindergarten Student of the Month is Kinsley McGlon. Kinsley is such a wonderful and hardworking student. She works and tries her best, and she has made so much growth already this year. I am so proud of her and can't wait to see where she is by the end of the year. So congratulations to Kinsley McGlon. And our first grade student of the month is Madeline Stewart. Madeline, teacher has this to say about her. She came to our school new this year, but you would never know it because she's never met a stranger. She loves to talk. And that talking shows just how smart she is. She has adjusted well and fits right in. She always tries to do her very best and gives one hundred percent effort in everything that she does. She always has a smile on her face, truly brightens my day, and just is such a ray of sunshine. Congratulations to Madeline Stewart. And our second grade student of the month is Josiah Richards. Josiah's teacher has this to say about him. I have chosen Josiah as Student of the Month for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, Josiah is an exemplary friend to his classmates. He is always kind, caring, and thoughtful. For example, one of his friends was struggling to pass a level on Fact Master, so Josiah went out of his way to give this student tips and pointers to help him be successful. He strives for excellence every day. For example, even though he had reached his goal of fifteen iReady lessons, he, rather quickly, I might add, he continued to push himself to work on iReady so that he could be one of the math rock stars in the team. Josiah is always helpful. He is one of the first students to volunteer to help in any capacity, whether it's something I need or something a fellow classmate needs. Great job, Josiah Richards. And our third grade student of the month is Cole Miller. Cole is a great role model and an exemplary student and demonstrates responsibility each and every day. He remains accountable for his work and decisions. He is hardworking and strives to put forth his best effort each and every day. So congratulations, Cole Miller. Our fourth grade student of the month is Tavaris Allen. And Tavaris is new to our school, and he is such a model student. We always count on him to do the right thing. Other students should look to him to be the example of someone who deserves Student of the Month, every month. Tavaris is the perfect student to represent our school and the fourth grade. He has really come out of his shell since beginning of the school year. His eagerness to learn and participate exceeds my expectations. He completes all of his assignments on time, and he displays excellent conduct and always put forth his best effort. So congratulations, Tavaris Allen. And our fifth grade, when it comes to behavior in academics, he has a great attitude and also a great sense of humor. He has been working hard since his arrival. He is willing to help and has increased his spent time reading since the beginning of the school year. He is a good role model for his peers, and I'm glad that he joined our Chaco family. So congratulations to Xavier Comstock. And I'm going to assume the rain kept all of our students of the month out, but they're very blessed. I'm very proud of them as well as our employee of the month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Josh Kemp. I'm a principal here at Chattahoochee County Middle High School. I got Rodriguez helping me pass out the awards for tonight. First, I would like to give the award for Teacher of the Month to Ms. Brooke Rumpford. Ms. Rumpford is truly remarkable. No matter what we ask her to do, which is a lot, she always handles it in grace. She handles it with a smile. She, she has the type of personality where our students just, you know, they love having her as a teacher. They, they seek her out. She just presided over homecoming for us, which was always very stressful. And there's a lot going on. And at, at our homecoming dance Saturday night, we had, you know, the most, sold the most tickets, had the most kids attend than we've ever had. It was, it was equivalent, Ms. Jones said, this is like a prom crowd. You know, we're, we're not used to that. And part, part of the reason is our school's bigger. But another, a major part is because whatever Ms. Rumpford is doing, our kids want to be a part of. So I'm, I'm thankful and we are very blessed to have her as part of our staff.
All right. So, we're going to start the Student of the Month awards now. And for sixth grade, the Student of the Month is Hannah Brookins.
Hannah's the model student. She attends to her instruction diligently. She's always eager to help a fellow student. She is always willing to explain her reasoning and help other sixth grade peers. She's a wonderful student to teach. Hannah Brookins. Seventh grade is Thomas Robinett. Thomas is, this is one of those awards that really sticks out to me because this is my second year being in the building with Thomas, and he can be a handful. But he, he's the type of kid that lightens up your day, you know, makes you smile. But his teacher came to me a week ago and was just going on and on about how he's showing more maturity and he's taking his, his schoolwork more seriously. And that's what you want to see. We, we, we preach growth mindset, and we are definitely seeing it with Thomas. So, Seventh Grade Student of the Month, congratulations to Thomas Robinett. Okay, the eighth grade student of the month is Taya Lockett. Taya's teacher says she is lucky to have her in her class. She comes to class prepared and eager to learn daily. She participates in math class from start to finish. She demonstrates she's ready to learn. She has a tremendous work ethic and a wonderful model student. Congratulations.
Put this thing up here. I told you it was five. We'll have others do it. Our ninth grade student is, is this Laura Maynor.
Laura always comes to class with a great attitude, and she's always up for a challenge and strives to be the best she can be inside and outside of the classroom. Laura is also, we, we started a student, we call it the Student Lead Leadership Team, and she's a member of that. She brings a lot to our school. All right, our tenth grade student of the month is Ms. Kylie Beasley. You know, it's always special. Kylie's going to take the long way around. It's always special when you see, you know, you've been in a place for a while and you watch kids roll up. And then when you see those, those kids, those students start to take leadership roles in school.
That is one of my favorite aspects being...
In education. And probably about a month ago, First Sarge, Kylie was, we were on Breakfast Street, and he says, "That girl right there has what it takes to lead our GRTC program one day." And I'm going to tell you something, we have a tremendous program, but that, he was not playing. He was serious. And, um, I, look, I, I'm not even reading what's been written about her because that tells you all you need to know. She's a special person with, with special leadership skills, and we are very fortunate to have her. So congratulations, Kylie.
Our eleventh grade student is Jacob Fasswell. Jacob is the type of student every teacher will succeed in their classroom. He works relentlessly to maintain all A's. He is very respectful, and I can only hope that other students will see his passion for his schoolwork. He is motivated, and he will be successful in life. Keep it up, Jacob. All right, and our senior student of the month is Ms. Skye. There's a compassion in the young lady who does not play, and they are bursting into the blood, giving her weight. She is a mother who puts in every effort to do so. She is kind to her fellow classmates and makes an effort to brighten everyone's day. I can speak on this. I, I, Ms. is the type of student who, if, if someone is upset and she sees that she's going to run out of weight, they make them feel better. That's the culture that we really strive to create. So congratulations, Ms. Skye.
These are the Middle High School Students of the Month.
Congratulations to everyone.
All right, and we just have a few items for the Action Agenda tonight. First item, the Personnel.
Yes. Personnel, if on your slate of recommendations, you will see our names, and I would like to recommend approval of the slated employees as presented. Yeah, the three drivers that are listed on here, it's all pending the, the background check, the MVR, and then they finish their training. So our, our anticipation is if it all is successful, then we would have at least some driver's additions by January. So we're very excited about that.
I was excited to see that.
That our signs across the community seem to be working.
Okay. There is a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, and all of them approve? Okay. Passes, thank you. All right, and then we have the Perkins.
Mm-hmm. The Perkins Five Federal Budget is a federal budget to support our CTAE pathways. And Mr. Clifton Clark is here as he oversees our CTA pathways in the Career Academy. Do you have anything to add before we make a recommendation on this?
Yes, ma'am. In particular, this, the Perkins Five grant has been budgeted so that anyone purchased equipment to support the industrial program that was virtual CRE program previously. In particular, a huge portion of it was budgeted for automotive program, and we want to make sure that our automotive program line up with Toyota, whom we have already partnered with. And this is such a big deal because Toyota has already agreed to accept any and all the students that meet the criteria to be our intravehicular mechanic. With that said, starting in tenth grade, it's a six-year program, but it's our kids completing. At age twenty-two, twenty-three, they can be making over a hundred thousand dollars a year. And that can be life-saving for, for our kids in our community as well as all the students serving. So I, I request that this, this grant be approved if you would like.
Perfect. Again, that is, this is a federal grant that we receive every year. We've put our emphasis this year on those industrial programs that we have like automotive. So I would like to recommend approval of the federal Perkins budget to support those CTAE pathways.
You see how quick that motion is? All right, Teresa and Shirley. All right, you all want it approved? Okay, yes, it was passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you to our students who are participating in all of our pathways. And not only is it helping you get ahead in life, it's helping you decide what type of profession you want to go in, whether it's a skilled trade, which again is highly sought after and highly marketable, or using the dual enrollment classes to further your time in college. So we're just proud of our students and what they're doing with, with our academy. The next is a recommendation, I'd like to recommend approval for the requested out-of-state travel, and that is for our cross-country meet all the way across the bridge.
A little far. Okay, I'm sorry. We're Sine and Teresa. All right, all that approves the out-of-state travel? All right. And that completes the action items, and we did not have an executive session, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Shirley, quick on that one. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Teresa, and all that approves. Great. All right, meeting adjourned, and thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you.